All right, I'd like to call the order to study session for July 20th, 2023. Please stand for the pledge.
The Pledge of Allegiance, tutored flying of the United States of America and tutored Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mike Arilio is absent. Brian Blazak?
Present.
Wayne Pandinos?
Present.
Gerald Swet?
Present.
Michael Schilling?
Here.
Joe Wizewati?
Present.
David Westlin?
Present.
Beth Hernandez, present.
Yeah, item A, student resource officer, Chief, Chief Morris.
Good evening, council.
Evening, sir.
We're here tonight to discuss the, or bring up the school resource officer that we talked about a few months back, or whatever it was, Crown Point Christian School. Again, just to kind of recap some of the things that we already discussed, I know their attorney and our town attorney have been working together for, in reference to the agreement between the two schools. So basically, the way it'll work is the same identical way that it works with Lake Central. So they pay for 75 percent, they're paying for an officer 75% of their salary while they're in school, the other 25% the town picks up. So, so it's during their, the school year, when the kids are in session during instruction, that officer is assigned at the school, which they're paying for everything, salary, benefits, vehicle, equipment, you name it, they're paying for it all during that time. Once school is over in the summer months, that officer comes back to the town, works the road, and is assigned to a crew during their time away from the school. So we had a couple meetings at the school, they're very, very excited about it, and the parents are excited about it and looking forward to this happening. I know I spoke to a lot of the school staff and parents, and they're, they're, they're looking forward to it. So I sent you the costs and everything, and it's pretty close. The school has the same figures as well, too, and they had a proposal that they drew up and how they plan on funding it. I know they had some donations, some pretty generous donations, and from what I understand, they pretty much have the first year already covered. So with that being said, I know there were some questions in regards to the agreement, which Mr. Terpstra and Attorney Westlin can maybe explain where they're at with things on that. So take any questions, if not, I'll leave it up to Mr. Terpstra and Attorney Westlin if they have anything.
One minor thing, the perf we'd have to increase from the 17 and a half to 19.1.
Yes, because that did go up, yes, correct.
How long is their contract that they're going to sign for?
Lake Central, it's a two-year. I know they suggested maybe, in the copy that I got, maybe doing it every year. I, with, for me, I mean, it's, either way is fine with me, depending on, you know, what the schools, what they want to do, and what, what, what you guys want to do as well, too. Either way is fine with me, but Lake Central is a two-year.
Wouldn't it make sense to link, you know, sync them up so that they're both running on the same time?
Yeah, I would agree with that, yeah, just keep things easy.
Yeah, see if they'll go along, they should go along with that program as well.
Right.
If they were to terminate-
It's a different school system.
They probably gotta allow us time, you know, they give us notice.
I'm sorry?
If they were to terminate, they would give us-
Yeah, there's terms in there in the contract, if they need to terminate, how that's going to work out between the two parties.
If they terminate it, then what happens to the police officer? Does he go back to?
Then he would go back to the town, correct, and be working on the street.
And what does this do, Chief, to your, you've been asking for more people, and now you've got more people, now we're going to sacrifice one to go to the school?
We'd be hiring another one.
We'd be hiring another one.
Okay.
Yeah. We'd hire another officer, and that officer would replace the officer that's going into the school.
And we would cover this ramp-up fees, because that costs money to onboard, and according to the contract and the fee schedule, Crown Point Christian School would absorb that ramp-up or that onboarding expense to the town.
So Steve, would we consider only budgeting the 25% segment and the 100% summertime, the one that doesn't get replaced, would we handle that out of our budget?
Yeah, so basically, they, according to this, it's, they pay in two different increments, so two different times of the year. So basically, whatever they contribute to the town would cover, it, it, it kind of a wash, either way, one way or the other. So whatever they pay towards the town, it pays for that officer.
But for budgeting purposes, you'd have to budget the full expense of the officer, and then wait for reimbursement back to the general fund?
That's what I was leading to.
Right.
Thanks, Beth.
Okay.
I was leading to that, it's just, as long as we budget for the quarter of a year of a summer.
Yeah, you would have to, for sure.
No, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, because we're working on budgets currently.
But you budget the whole thing.
Yeah.
Oh, no, 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 I understand.
I think I misunderstood you, yes.
No, no, that's fine.
You have to budget for it, yes.
Yeah, I understand. What I get is there the annual salary, the church or the school would be picking up 50,000 of it, the town would be picking up 39,000 of it, with your numbers here.
Yeah, and John Ryan Terpstra, I'm the, well, I'm a member of the Board of Trustees, and I happen to be a lawyer, so I get stuck with being the lawyer for this one, but I think you need to look at it as a reimbursable public-private partnership, right? So the town is responsible to pay that officer for their salary and benefits, but the Crown Point Christian School Association, the entity that runs the school, is signing a contract that obligates them to reimburse the town for all expenses paid to that officer while the officer is serving the school.
Yeah, I wasn't concerned about us getting the money from you, I was just making sure-
But for budgeting.
For us budgeting.
Yes.
Because, you know, regardless of how you budget, or how your municipality or your school district budgets, just wanted to make sure we were in agreement that we would budget that piece or portion, and of course, with the inter-local or the school agreement, we would be all right above board. Okay.
And you know, obviously, I'm for it, I mean, to protect 900 kids to 1,200 kids once that school is fully grown, and for 30 grand a year, I think it's-
Oh, no.
Money well spent.
I don't have a problem with it.
Well, it also gives you an extra officer in town during the day.
Yeah.
For the larger event.
Where's, where's the money coming for the police car and the uniform?
Not this guy, but this entity, yeah.
The school, he just explained that.
I did want to make sure, I mean-
We have some, we have some grant monies that will come in-
Go ahead.
Because there is a safety grant through the state of Indiana. We also have a couple of generous donors that'll cover the remainder for the first year, because the first year is really the-
Startup year.
The steep expense to the school. And then, year over year thereafter, we've already built it into our annual budget, so that'll be a budgetary line item for the school going forward, so we don't have to rely on the generosity of our donors. It will be budgeted into the tuition dollars and other income that the school experiences on an annual basis.
Is there any objection to doing an annual agreement?
Well, I think for the first round, I think two years makes sense, because we're putting a pretty heavy investment in at the front end, but then I think after the, that the first two-year term, having a one-year review ongoing thereafter wouldn't be an issue. If that makes sense to Attorney Westlin.
And what, what's your fiscal year start?
June to June, so June, June 1 to May 31st.
All right, anybody else have any questions?
Yeah, I was a little bit confused on that. So the agreement we have now with Lake Central is a two-year agreement.
Correct.
So after the initial two years, we would like to continue to do two-year agreements, not annual.
Yeah, so the question was, would I have any objection to a one-year renewing contract? And my only objection would be for that first term, I think that needs to be two years.
Right.
Because we're really putting in the upfront cost for that, we'd like to get an extra year out of it.
Yeah.
But if the town is inclined to do two years, we would support the two-year process, I think that's-
I like that.
Easier for planning and budgeting purposes.
I would agree, okay.
From our perspective as well.
Thank you. And for the indemnification on 2F for the insurance, our insurance would be covering the school?
I think that the way that would work is, the school would be a lost payee if there was some sort of fault attributed to the officer, because we're not taking on the employment of the officer, we're not taking on the training, the provision of instrumentality, we're not providing those skills and resources to the officer to serve and protect the school itself. So the, the way that the indemnity would work, and I would say that this is in line with the agreement you have with Lake Central as well, that if it were to be that the fault of the officer is what caused the loss of the casualty or the damage, then yes, the town's insurance would step in and indemnify and defend Crown Point Christian School in that loss.
So there's a difference, right, between agreeing to indemnify and defend and the language that the school would be added as an additional insured on the policy covering casualty and physical.
Yeah, and if we want to wordsmith that, I'm fine wordsmithing that with you and coming to a mutual understanding of where we want to end up.
And I have no doubt, well, I'm not, let me rephrase that, I'm not doubting that what you're saying about it being in the Lake Central agreement. I wasn't here when that was drafted, so the luck of the draw, you get me, and I flagged it, right?
Fortunate inheritance, that's right.
Yeah, so, and the other comment that I had was the language, John, about in paragraph 2B, the school will properly reass, the town will properly reassign substitute or replace any SRO who is not acceptable to the school after review of any concerns. I mean, so you, that gives the school, like carte blanche, to say, yeah, we don't like this guy, oh yeah, we'll try another guy, okay, we don't like this guy, right? Like-
Yeah.
There's gotta be, like, he, the chief can't be hamstrung, like, keep sending you new guys, right? Like, we gotta agree on who the guy is-
Yep.
Or gal.
Yep.
Not to be sexist. We need to agree on who the officer is, send him over there, and then that person needs to be there for a period of time, right? The only way it works for you is if there's some stability in that position.
Yeah, sure.
And it's the only way it works for us, too.
Yep.
So I didn't like that sentence, and-
That would also be one of those pieces that are inherited by you, so flagging that is not surprising to me. I think there needs to be some foreseeability-
Right.
In that turnover, so if you want to add language such as for cause or-
That's what I was thinking, like, I mean, obviously, if the officer does something, right, and-
Yeah, but I can-
That's another story, but just-
Yeah.
A personality conflict is not.
I don't think we're talking three, four, five years from now, because we have an officer that's on force now for the town of St. John, that we're really excited about, has a personal vested interest in the school, has a personal relationship with the school, but you're right, six, seven, eight years down the line, when he doesn't have that personal relationship with the school any longer, we need to build in some stability to that provision.
Yeah, I don't want that guy sitting here-
Yep.
You know, six, seven years in my seat going, what in the heck was Westlin doing agreeing to that, right? Like, why, why, why in the world would he-
Wouldn't be the first time someone wonders that, right?
Yeah, probably, probably, point taken.
No, I, I'm, I'm not opposed to revising those, and if you and I want to wordsmith that, or if you want to send over some proposed language, I'd be more than happy to look at it and get it back to you quickly.
And there was only one other comment I had, which was, it said, and it was really, this is really a question, it says the SRO, is there 200 days each school year, 180 of those days is instructional. So I took that to mean, school's in session 180 days, but for another 20, he's just chilling? I mean, what?
Yeah, so that was a number given to me by the head of school. The head of school has a program in mind where the SRO would also be doing a lot of professional development training for our faculty, staff, and our administration. We also have a lot of extracurricular events, so we would like to have the opportunity to have the officer available for those after-school events, plays, sporting events, other things like that, if it were necessary for him to be there. I don't know how many days that is in particular, but I will say that if we build into the contract 200 days, we're the ones that are paying for 200 days. And if, and if it is utilized, those 200 days, great, if not, then you guys get the benefit of 10, 11, 12 days that we're not using him, and he can be at service of the town.
I can speak on that as well, too, like, for instance, Lake Central, the officer goes there like a week before they start to get prepared for the upcoming school year, and then they're there a week after. So there's 10 days right there that they're, and then there's some days in between, like, that they're off of school where the town's not, so they just go into, you know, kind of make that an office stay there, and get some of their, their paperwork done, reports done during that day.
Well, if you're comfortable with it, then that's fine.
Yeah.
Chief, you brought up about the, or Mr. Terpstra, if there's extra events after school, would that be considered overtime for the officer, if he worked a day?
I don't believe so, it's a salaried position, so I don't think he would be working overtime.
Yeah, and it all depends, too, I mean, he can adjust his schedule if he needs to, you know, for after-school events or things like that.
We also want to keep the officer excited about coming to school, so we don't want to burn him out either, you know?
Anybody else have any other questions?
When are you guys going to have this agreement finalized for council?
I mean, you're talking about rewriting two sentences.
Right, but I'm, the other question is, is when are you looking to hire a new folk?
As soon as I get the green light from, from council.
Because you're talking, meant in the salary ordinance to include that, the new person as well.
John wants this next, you know, I mean, he wants it next Wednesday, right?
Right.
You want to know going into the school year.
Right. I mean, as long as you get the agreement on there, we shouldn't have any other issue with that, other than making the amendment maybe in August on the salary ordinance, as long as that works for your timing. Okay.
But we can have the agreement next week.
Yeah, that's fine.
Have you got a body lined up, Steve?
We do.
I figured.
Yeah.
No, because next week's like, you know, a couple days.
Six days, yeah.
Okay.
Maybe like by 7:30?
John is very motivated.
Okay.
So I imagine tomorrow morning, I'm going to see those two sentences redrafted.
I liked it in them, yeah.
All right, thanks, guys.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Item B, annexation matter, the fiscal plan resolution at 1,000, or 140 Klein Avenue. We had the public hearing last month, and the ordinance was approved on first reading. Everything in mind to go Wednesday?
Oh, yeah, we're ready to take action to finalize that, adopting the resolution, and then the annexation agreement on, adopting on second reading.
All right, any questions? All right, we'll move along now, here's where you want to go to item N?
N, if we could, please, yeah. So, item-
Recommendation.
As you know, the town's park impact fee is up for renewal every five years, this is the year. Study was commissioned by the Parks and Rec Board for this matter, it was awarded to Structure Point. We do have Luke Kessler here in person, and David Baird is here virtually to answer any questions you guys may have on this matter.
Hello, I'm Luke Kessler, I'm a landscape architect with American Structure Point, and remotely this evening, we have David, and he will start off by talking about the impact fee plan, I believe. Oh.
You're muted.
There are two items, can you hear me now? Can everyone hear me? Yeah, so there are two items that are actually on the agenda, the first one being the, actually O, it's listed as O, it's approved, the Zone Improvement Plan Resolution, and then the second one is the, the actual ordinance. So it's required by state law to have a plan put together anytime you're doing an impact fee, whether that impact fee is park and recreation as it is today, whether that be a road impact fee or stormwater impact fee, no matter what it is. So we've stepped through the requirements for that, we've had a impact fee advisory committee meeting, we've also had a planning commission meeting to discuss these items. The, the plan, which has been put forth, details basically all of the statutory requirements. In addition, it has all of the proposed improvements that have come forth through your master planning process for your parks and recreation, as well as an inventory from us as far as Americans with Disabilities Act requirements and additional needs. So what we do with that is we add up all of those infrastructure costs, and I think really the key page in that plan is, for those of you who may have it, is this, there's a page 130, or 136, and it shows-
Can you display that, David?
Uh, yeah, I can, I believe so, let me do that for everybody. Okay, can everyone see my screen now? Is it on the board? Okay. So the total infrastructure cost here, or that 21,428,000, required by state law, you have to take out what's called non-local revenues in this calculation. This is for a grant that the city typically, or has historically received with a local water conservation, I believe, Local Water Conservation Fund. And then also, what you have planned in your budget for capital improvements, you subtract those two numbers here from the 21 million cost, and then using, I'm sorry, Joe, did you have something?
No.
Oh, okay. Using demographic data, we, based on trends of population growth and the building permit information that came from your, your planning department, we've calculated that we believe there will be 5,252 housing units in the next 10 years, so we took that number, divided it by what we subtracted out here, and then we got to a per-dwelling unit cost of $3,423 per dwelling unit. So that's pretty much the heart of it, and we've gone into much more depth in, in presentations and the, the planning commission and the impact fee. I'm happy to do that if, if need be for the town council, but I'll stop there and see if we have any initial questions.
Currently, what is the impact fee on the parks, around 1,800?
It is, this would be a substantial-
1,863, something like that.
Yes, that is correct, and it would be a substantial increase. The two main reasons for that increase, the first one is the community center has been a, that's really the biggest. With the expected growth that you're going to have in the new population, the town has identified that as a need, that is, that is a costly need, and then also just your, your general growth, your growth expectancy, and the impact that it'll have on the existing infrastructure that you have. So those are the two main things, but really, the main thing is the community center, that's a, a large capital cost.
Is that a standard price now, that 3423 for five years, or will that increase a certain percentage every year? Like the-
Uh, no.
-one that we have now for impact fees for the road?
No, it does not, it would not increase. In fact, I flipped to the next page, and it shows that out, there would be no increase for the five years, that's not how we've done this in other communities. As, as of here, as well.
Yeah, I do. So we're going to have 5,252 new homes in the next 10 years. Where did that number come from, and is that even feasibly possible with the amount of land that we'll be taking in, in the current market conditions and things like that?
Well, so we looked at your building permit data, and looked at the amount that you're permitting today, base that on the amount of projected, now, that would be assuming that you are annexing to the south, and there's a large amount of land growth potential to the south, so that was calculated into that, that number.
Okay, thank you.
But then again, you never know what tomorrow brings.
Right. Yeah, I mean, we, we do our best to estimate, estimate these, these out, but that is true, but having said that, there is a substantial amount of potential growth to your south, as you guys know, but the, the land, the amount of land, I mean, would really have a potentially doubling effect on, on the town's size, both in population and in square footage.
You have a question?
Yeah, David, were the impact advisory committees' recommendation and the planning commission consistent, or the same?
No, they, they were not. The impact fee committee decided that they wanted to have a lower cost as their recommendation. The planning commission did recommend to the board, or to the council, the 3,423 per dwelling unit. I don't have in front of me the resolution of the impact advisory fee committee, but I believe it was, oh, I know it was substantially lower, but I believe it was in the 2000s. If anyone has that, the actual resolution there, you might be able to state that out, but I believe it was to 800, something to that.
One of the reasonings that they gave for the lower recommendation was because they felt that not all the new residents should be paying the, the full burden of that, the existing residents should be paying a portion of that, but that's not how impact fees work, it's, you got to take it from the new, not the existing, and so I-
Yeah.
That was their rationale behind why they reduced it, which, you know, I mean, they, they had a rationale, but I don't, I don't think it was, made a lot of sense.
Well- There was, just to follow up on that-
Wasn't it that they felt that the, that the new homeowner shouldn't be taking on the entire burden of the community center?
Right.
That, that- That there's a need for a community center now, and because you can't impose an impact fee retroactively-
That's correct.
They would, the new homeowners should pay their percentage based on the number of homes versus the current number of homes. So they came up with some percentage-
Which was like 43%.
Which brought it down in like $2,400 range.
Correct.
Yeah, and I think, so that is correct, that is a correct statement as to their rationale. There was a lot of discussion at that meeting about, you know, about possibilities for legal possibilities for what could be assessed to the current residents, and, you know, legally, at least from an impact fee perspective, there is no way to, to do that on existing residents, so, but they felt very, very, there were some very strong opinions on that, on that committee, that the full cost should not go to new residents, and that the town-
And David, it's a correct statement, right, that at this point, the ordinance that the council will be considering leaves it, so you basically have two recommendations before you in terms of amounts, the amount in the ordinance that you've prepared is blank. So if they're going to adopt, if this council's going to adopt an ordinance, they need to consider what amount is going to go in that blank.
That is correct. That is correct. That is a correct statement, yes. There was, I mean, both committees had a recommendation to pass this ordinance. I want to make that absolutely clear, but there were different calls, different amounts.
And right, and just by the way we do our agendas and talking with Joe, the resolution, approving the zone improvement plan will come first, and that has to statutorily come right bef-, not right before, but it's got to come before the ordinance.
Right.
So-
That's correct, yes.
But our, thankfully, our agendas have it that way anyway, or it's going to.
Yeah, for the actual meeting, the agenda will be laid out that way, yes.
All right. Any discussion on a dollar amount?
I have nothing.
Nothing at this time?
No.
All right.
Yeah, so if there's no consensus, then you're just going to need an emotion on Wednesday to have somebody state the amount.
Yeah.
Right.
Any other discussion on this item? All right, moving on.
David and Luke, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item O, approve zone improvement plan resolution?
I think we kind of covered all that, didn't we?
Yeah, you're good.
Yeah.
All right. Then we'll move back to item C. This is derelict buildings.
Yeah, so-
Unsafe building code provision. Attorney Heather McCarthy.
Good evening. So I was asked to speak tonight. I had an opportunity to meet with Mr. Wizwadi and Mr. Mendoza prior to talk a little bit about the unsafe building law in the town. Just by way of background, I'm a lawyer in the area. I represent the city of Hobart, do a lot of work for other municipalities, working right now on something very similar in the city of Gary, to bring their codes up to date. But essentially, in regard to unsafe building, I did review your municipal code, and there are provisions in it which incorporate the state code, which is what all municipalities need to follow in terms of those provisions. And I believe the situation here is you have the code provision, but there's been nothing done to kind of operationalize it when you have issues with unsafe buildings. And what are unsafe buildings? So those are buildings that could be a fire hazard, a hazard to public health, present some type of danger to the building. And then most recently, there were statutory changes at the state level to include vacant buildings. And those were some of the issues that we had discussed. You know, how does a municipality address those buildings? I want to clarify, first of all, that the state statute, which is what you would be following in addressing these buildings, is very prescriptive. So there's a very clear number of steps that you have to follow in addressing these. And the issue is either removing them through demolition or working with the owner to get the building up to code. And generally, that's done through a hearing authority at the local level. So that would be something, if you so choose to move ahead with something like this, would be to just kind of look at the current committees, boards in place, and decide which that might be a good fit for. I don't know how the municipality currently deals with public nuisances, but generally, when I do unsafe building work-
Why on Facebook?
Facebook. I understand that completely. But generally, that kind of is a good fit for addressing those. So for unsafe building, it's, as I mentioned, it's a very prescriptive process. Due process is allowed to the owner, so there's very prescriptive deadlines in notifying the owner of the property and anyone who has substantial interests. Some of these properties might have mortgages or other liens on them. So it's noticing and bringing the owner in to see if it's not imminent danger, which means it needs to be addressed right now because there's a danger of the public being put in a situation where someone could get hurt or essentially just being overall unsafe. But if it can be addressed, you know, you're not taking the property. What you are doing is addressing the building. And a lot of times, in my experiences with these buildings, especially the ones that have been vacant a long time, is that it ends up being demolished. That still does not give ownership to the municipality. You're just ridding that property from your community so that it doesn't present the issues that unsafe buildings, you know, present to the public. But as with anything, these things cost money. So there are processes in place to also allow for the municipality to be reimbursed if it contracts these services out for a demolition. Or in some cases, municipalities do that type of work on their own if they're capable. Generally, that's more bringing an unsafe building up to par or sealing it off so it's safe for the interim before the building's actually addressed, whatever that hearing authority deems necessary, or if it is demolition. But then those liens are put on the property if they're not paid. And, you know, those type liens on a property present all types of other avenues. If this is really the case of an owner that has just left a building and is doing nothing with it and the property, there's often cases, less common, where, you know, there's a foreclosure on that property. But I just want to be clear, there's a lot of confusion about unsafe building law. Often, people consider it taking a property. It's not taking it, it's just ridding it of an unsafe structure. So I'm here tonight, I, my understanding was there might be some questions. I didn't want to be too lengthy, but I could certainly answer any questions you might have.
Do you have a contract with us now, or?
I do not, no. I was just asked to come speak and I had met with your manager and your planner.
And we, as a town, we have a responsibility to the residents in town to make sure that if there is some property that is a danger, if we don't do nothing, then we're liable for some of that because we didn't do our due diligence to take care of it. Is that not right?
Exactly. If the municipality, the standard would be if you were made aware of it through either like a code enforcement, there's been complaints, or you should have known. In other words, there's such an eyesore in your town, you know this building's dangerous and no one's doing anything about it. So it's really an obligation on behalf of municipalities to address these buildings just because, especially with the vacant, it's not only the structure, but it can become a environment of crime and other nefarious activities that you don't want in your community. And that is why the state allows these provisions to address these. And as I said before, due process is going to those who have interest in the property and the building. They're allowed to come before you. And if they are in fact willing to address the issues, oftentimes, they've already been cited in the past. A lot of municipalities don't go to unsafe building, they just use their nuisance. Maybe you're mowing for them or doing all kinds of other things. But when it really gets to the point where you know that building is dangerous, it does kind of, you know, it does create exposure for the municipality if something should go wrong.
At the point, you know, it's an eyesore and there's fuel in there, but who makes the determination that it's unsafe? Send our inspectors out there, or do you send someone from the state to go determine this building is unsafe and needs to be demolished?
Yeah, I mean, in some instances in the past in working with unsafe building law, there has been instances where like the county health department has been brought in and they add to the opinion. Because you have to, you have to create an evidentiary record. The owner is allowed a hearing, and by the time they get to that hearing, you know, there's findings that are written up. Generally, it includes the fire inspector, the fire chief, if there's electrical issues or issues that it could be a fire hazard. And also, a lot of these buildings, especially ones that have been vacant, a lot of fire officials just look at it, they don't want to go in, which creates a huge issue if there was a fire because it's not safe for their men because the structures doesn't have the integrity it should. So, and then I would say, if you have a building official, generally a building official or some other body already, you don't want to reinvent the wheel, but some body within the city that would kind of deal more with building issues, code violations, permitting, that's who you generally would probably be the best fit. That's something that could be discussed, and I'm just looking from outside in and giving you examples of what other municipalities do. But generally, that just makes the most sense. And that building official would then, you know, act in providing all the information to the hearing body for them to make a decision. So this is not one person making a decision. And then, of course, the owner or those who have interest in the property are also allowed to speak and provide their, you know, rebuttal if they have one to, to some of the accusations that are being made about the building. The key here is, is just giving the opportunity to be heard, you know, so that it's a fair process. But generally, your building inspector, fire chief are going to be the experts for whoever the hearing authority is to determine, or to allow you to, whoever that body is, to determine if this is an appropriate route to take.
Putting the processes and the procedures and the legislation necessary to get all that done, and that's why we would be engaging Ms. McCarthy, is she would be doing all of that for the town. She's had a lot of expertise in the city of Hobart. Sergio has dealt with her on a number of occasions. In fact, you do other municipalities as well. So we talked to Dave Westlin about it, he said she would be a perfect fit to do this.
Yeah, it's funny, because Dave, when I started in municipal law, I did litigation. And then when I moved to be city attorney now, Westlin and Bennett do a lot of our litigation. So it's kind of like we all work together, we all know each other, kind of know each other's styles. But this would really be, once you have, you decide what the infrastructure looks like, who the hearing body's going to be, if you get a really good set of forms and get your ordinance, it would need to be tweaked a little bit just to allow the public to know the processes that are in place. Once that done, it kind of just rolls out real smoothly. It's not that complicated. It's just getting that kind of infrastructure in place so you have a way to address those buildings.
I want to see the American Legion that aimed their gunner over there at Kima.
Boy. So who convenes this hearing? And is there, do they make a decision or do they make a recommendation?
The building official, in most cases, along with, if there's a fire hazard involved, generally, a fire inspector or chief make the recommendations. So the hearing body, as I mentioned before, it might be this body, it might be another board or commission within the town, wherever it would fit best. I know in Hobart, they do it through the Board of Works. And it's, if there's an unsafe building issue after the Board of Works, then the hearing body becomes the unsafe building hearing, you know, body, which is presented.
So we make the decision of what that body looks like.
Yeah. And I can advise you on where that kind of makes the most sense. You don't want to make more work for yourself. So we can take a look at that. I can work with Sergio and see where that kind of fits best. But yeah, that's really up to you. That's not something that's prescribed by the state statute.
So there's no really pat procedure by state mandate? It's basically a local type situation? Is that what you're saying?
In terms of who's hearing it and how it's organized, where the state statute really comes into play is notice, you know? How you have to give notice, an opportunity for hearing. You know, all those, to make sure that that, you know, not only in the state but in this country, we value ownership of property. It's one of the main values we have. So we don't want to be, you know, it's not taking someone's property, but we don't want to knock down a building without giving them the opportunity to come in and remedy the situation themselves. Unfortunately, in some situations, that just doesn't work out. But it's nice for the municipality to have this type of, you know, ability when the owner has just kind of turned its back on these properties, to be able to address it and keep the community safe. And also frankly, you know, I know in a lot of places I do this, it's really not fair, especially if it's in a business sector, to the other businesses around it who are keeping up their businesses and maintaining their property, and then you have, you know, this eyesore. So this just gives you the ability to address those issues, always being balanced with also hearing from the owner of the property and giving them an opportunity to fix the situation. This just kind of gives you a little heavier hand because if they don't want to fix it, the outcome could be that the building is demolished.
So basically, it's really in our hands, the town's hands?
In the end, that's your determination, but I think your attorney would advise you for some of the buildings that are very bad, that they just, to protect the municipality and the taxpayers from exposure to dangers, lawsuits, that, you know, some of them might be in a, it's your decision, but you're kind of like, you don't have much leeway when they're real bad.
Go out looking for support from downstate or, you know?
No.
Okay.
No.
That way, if it's a local decision, we're pretty, yeah, we're in control.
Yeah, and you have findings of fact. Your building official, your fire depart-, fire chief, they're the ones who are, they're the experts who you'll be relying on to determine.
All right, any other questions?
I'd like to see you come on board. I'd like to see you work with Attorney Westlin.
Okay.
And we're going to have a new town council coming at the beginning of the year, so I don't think you're going to go anywhere, but you're going to start something and you're going to get it going. I don't think there's any chance that they're going to say, no, we don't, we don't want you to do this. So I think, you know, you have to keep that in mind, but I think between you and Dave, I think there'll be a good relationship and we should get something done because we do have a responsibility to our residents. And like you say, if something's, if we know about something we didn't fix it, then we're on the hook even more.
Yeah.
But I want to thank you for coming out and doing your presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Heather.
Thank you.
We'll have this on the agenda for next week.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And do you waiver vendor fees for the fire department open house? Chief Ladoo.
Good evening, everybody. I'm looking for the council to consider, as they have in years past, to waive the vendor fees for our fire prevention open house. Our open house is currently, not currently scheduled, is scheduled for October 7th. We have five confirmed vendors and we have five more that are interested. Currently, the vendor fee is $50, so we've waived this in years past and just asking you guys to consider that again.
Thank you.
So we'll have that on the agenda then for next week?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm not going to sit down.
Item E, you're up again.
All right.
Fire Department Budgetary Transfer.
So this is, just a little bit of history on this. So currently, we have three shifts. Our shifts work 24 hours and 48 hours off. Two of these shifts are staff of five full-time members, one shift remains at four. Additionally, we attempt to staff each shift of supplemental part-time positions. So during the day, our maximum staffing would be seven, and then the evening, our maximum staffing would be six. The reason that's there is our volunteer staff is typically home, they mostly work eight to five, so we go down in the evening. So after quarter two this year, we were reviewing the budget, and I basically had 4,322 unused hours in my part-time appropriation. I only used 68% of the budget at that time, which basically left, or leaving, $232,237.53. and I basically had 4,322 unused hours in my part-time appropriation. I only used 68% of the budget at that time, which basically left or leaving 232,237.53 for the second half of the year. This would be more than enough to do this transfer that I'm talking about. If I were to trend and project the unused time for part-time of the budget, for part-time budget, I would have roughly 6,056 hours for the year, which would leave the appropriation $134,746 in the green. So we would have leftover there. So I'm asking the council to allow me to make an appropriation transfer for the remainder of the year to the full-time appropriation line item. I would then ask the council to create a full-time firefighter/paramedic position. I would, this position will be fully funded with the appropriation transfer. The total transfer, if I were to offer this position, would start probably on September 1st, just based on, it has to go through the council. You'd have to create the position. We'd have to amend the salary ordinance. I'd have to get the person through perf, all that. For fiscal year 2024, in the budget that I submitted to Joe, Senator Dalton, and we went over it last, actually, this week a little bit, I've included that transfer in my budget proposal. The unused part-time position can support a full-time firefighter making all five shifts, all, all three shifts, five, and still attempting to fill seven during the day, six at night for fiscal year 2024. So our unfortunate truth is, minimum staffing for this town of St. John is three. What that does is staffs a full-time ambulance. So due to our contract with the hospital and the state, I staff two people on the ambulance and then one person on the fire truck. If there was calls and we, it seems everywhere, but in St. John, we have three calls at once, we'd only be able to supply one ambulance. Then another person would go there and try to mitigate the situation the best he or she could, and we'd be calling mutual aid. Mutual aid also calls us. So right now, our minimum staffing is really three. But moving to five full-time per shift would increase our minimum staffing to four, which by no means is safe, by no means meets the national average or meets the NFPA suggested amount. But what it does do for the town and the citizens is supplies one ALS ambulance and one staffed fire vehicle. So I'm not requesting new money. I'm managing the budget that I was provided. I'm thinking in the safety of the residents, who we are entrusted to serve, the men and women of the St. John Fire Department, and I'd like you to please consider this position than I would have created the transfer. So I have a sheet that I should have probably gave to Jason that would have been able to put on the screen.
That's hindsight. No, thank you.
Thanks, Kevin.
And I'm prepared to answer questions to the best of my ability. Any questions that I answer?
From what I've gathered, you're basically using unused money already in your budget.
Yeah, so I'm not asking for any new money. I'm using money that's going to be not used in our budget. By doing that and creating this one position, I am increasing the amount of service I could provide to the town. Again, it's not the right amount, the best amount, but I am increasing it, making our citizens, our town, our people safer.
Why aren't you using, currently using that money for part-time?
I'm trying the hardest that I can.
Okay. So you're not like, not scheduling them so you can bank some money?
No, so the way part-time works, and most firefighter/paramedics, firefighter/EMPs or journeymen, they go to the place, they leave their full-time job, they go elsewhere. We have an awesome schedule for that. We work 24 on, 48 off. So they're able to do that. We just don't have people picking up anymore. If you ask, if you even look at my employee list, I have a very heavy part-time roster. I could still bring people on, and they're not picking up. In fact, I'm trying to trim that to people and hold them accountable and say, hey, I need you to work at least 24 hours a month. It doesn't do any good for you, me, the town, or anybody. You're just hanging on for the T-shirt. So we're trying, we're actively trying, they just don't pick up. The other part is, when it's a part-time job, if Jerry's like, hey, Kevin, let's go to a White Sox game, my part-time job will be like, let's go to the White Sox game. When it's my full-time job, you have some buy-in for that community and being there.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Eventually, what it's doing is building his baseline because unfortunately, what part-time people, from what I understand, is on Monday, you have seven people available. Tuesday, when you need them, you don't have anybody available on the list.
Yeah, and the beauty of part-time is they pick up and work when they want to, right? So some of them work nights, some of them work days, some of them work when their wife or husband say that they can. But then a lot of them have kids, a lot of them coach, a lot of them do other things. And then weekends, we're on island. It's, it's not a fix. Part-time is not a fix for anything. And here's the other part, too. There's a lot of fire departments around us, municipalities, that are not doing EMS. And the EMS part of this job is quote-unquote, the work. You have some hardcore responsibility there. You're taking care of someone's life, and you're doing math. It's not hard math. If I could do it, they could do it. It's just work. They want to go to places where they could go sit essentially and collect a check or play firefighter. We don't have that. You know, they're on ambulants helping sick people, helping people that need help. You know, we do fires, but we're not, we're not the fire factory at all. We are mostly an EMS department that does well with fire. We still want to continue that. Fires, the low-frequency high hazard. Taking care of heart attacks and stuff like that, the people behind me, the people that aren't here, we're great at that. We'll do that, even with the three people that we have. We'll do that to the best of our ability. The problem is we keep getting double call after double call after double call, the triple call. And we're calling our friends from Lake Hills, or Sherville, or Cedar Lake, or Crown Point, who are also calling us. It's just a Band-Aid fix, part-time, unfortunately.
Basically, are you going to stable your, stabilize your budget for next year?
So.
Well, let me continue just so I can add to the scenario. Will you at least have the same budget from this year, next year, so that this situation, if possible, can continue?
Adding people from part-time, continue? Is that what you're asking?
No, no. Right now, you had a budget in for this year, all right? And so far, you've, because of people not feeling like working or won't want to, you have money left over, which you're going to pick up a body, okay? Which is good for us. However, hopefully, you hold your budget line to this year, so next year, so that you could probably get by with the same situation. You follow me?
Kind of, but maybe if I reword it to what I understand, and it may not be the... I'm actually, I decreased my part-time for next year.
Oh, okay.
Because why have it if we're just going to give it back?
Well, see, that's a solution, okay? You're just approaching it from a different.
I'm not trying, so I look at this as a line item transfer. So if this was a line item transfer from consumable EMS supplies to consumable fire supplies, I really wouldn't be in front of you with that. That'd be something that Clerk Trezor Hernandez and I would do. Where I need the approval is because I'm creating a position, or asking you guys to create a position. What I did in the 2024 budget, I subtracted this person, and I want that permanently out of the part-time position. I don't want that part-time money. Let's use it for a full-time person.
Well, see, that's basically what I was driving to. I just didn't go about it quite.
Yeah, no, let's stop playing, let's stop playing the game of...
I just wanted to make sure that once you gave us the benefit of an additional officer, that it stayed.
Yeah.
We wouldn't be playing musical people next year and going, oh, now we can't keep this or we can't do that.
And the beauty is, there's still an overage, right? I'd still be able to...
No, that's fine. I just wanted to verify that you could continue on once you get this body in place and start staffing for it, that you can keep it next year.
Yes.
Okay.
So that'd be the additional amendment to the salary ordinance to add the additional full-time person as well as SRO position. Well, new police officer, I should say.
And a transfer of funds?
Well, the transfer, and Beth would have to help me with that. I'd have to, I think I transferred it with Clerk Trezor Hernandez. And I could, I could essentially do that now, but there's no position. That's where I need you guys to create the position. We could take money out of station supplies and move it into the full-time line item appropriation. But again, Beth can't use that or can't, her and I can't make people. I guess. And Kevin speaks.
All right.
I'm still here next, so it's not leaving, going to leave.
Any questions on the...
I'm good.
All right, item F, fire equipment ARPA.
So just really quick, I gave a copy of the request to purchases and for the fire equipment. The 67228 is an invoice that is pending for approval. So that'll be on the ARPA resolution as well. But if you want to talk about the specifics. The 10493372 for the gear, that was approved by the council at our last meeting. Just FYI.
So the, so the RTP that I know of that's in front of the council today, because those numbers mean nothing to me, Joe, but I believe you, is for ballistic vests. And I'd like to just talk a little bit about that. Why, why does the fire department need ballistic vests? And why would I be coming to something like that? So one, let's just understand that it's 2023 in America. We live in a crazy time. Partly, that craziness ensures that I have a job, these people behind me have a job, police department has a job. The vests are for those crazy times. We're not going to wear these vests on every call. Hopefully, again, hopefully, we never wear these vests. Okay, they stay away. We, it would be a horrible purchase to never wear them. We'll train the heck out of them, but never wear them. These are for school shootings, mass, mass things like that. I'm looking for vests for stuff like that. We don't go in with our gear. We don't put an air pack on in a vest. It's for active shooter situations. And if you look at Columbine, because this all started with Columbine, FEMA came out with many studies. And what the study is now and the work that is now is called Rescue Task Force. The police department goes in and stops the killer, stops the killing. We go in while that's going on, and they're going to get the bad guy. That's why we need vests. We go in and stop the dying. We want to stop the dying. If something happened in any of our schools, SRO or not, we can't go in. We're not going in. If this happened at Stracks, take it away from our schools, we can't go in. We're not going in. People die because fire departments and EMS don't go in. I can't go in. We can't go in. We won't go in. That's what this RTP is for.
You probably wouldn't go in because it's still a hot scene and it has to be secured by, by the police.
That's not true. So new studies in Columbine, if you go back and read the literature, the waiting for the police to get the bad guy, people are still dying. The bad guy's in that corner. We have people down over here. Say, say something happened at Town Hall, again. Never, we don't want that to happen. There's a bad guy in this room, but they went in through the front, came through Joe's office, let's get Beth's office, she's here, but building and planning isn't here, so pick on them. They went to building and planning. Okay? The bad guy's in here. We know that because police department's in here. Am I going to let everyone else die over there?
Okay, I'm just, I'm just asking.
Well, things have changed, and that's what, that's what RTF is for. That's why we go in. You could bleed out in three minutes from a gunshot wound. Kids died in Columbine because the police department waited there. The fire department waited there. This would enable us to help people, which is what we do or want to do.
It's unfortunate times that, you know, we are in society. We have to give our people the best chances of helping people.
The other thing, and we had an incident in town.
You know, we don't create this world. It's created for us.
I agree.
Unfortunately, this is, I'm trying to keep up with the Joneses, and I don't want to ask that ever, really. But I want to protect the people here. And again, I keep going back to the schools, protect our kids. This gives me the opportunity to do that.
Thank you. One more thing on the inter-local agreement for the OptiCom.
Yeah.
Grant, did you want to kind of, if you wanted to talk on that?
Sure, I, if you're not here too with me, I'll stay up here. This podium's my new home.
So, go ahead.
So this grant, I'll talk a little bit, and I'm going to turn it over to Mike because Mike did the heavy lifting on this. This grant is for us and the police department. It's for the Opticoms. What those are are what I think our public really doesn't like. So you're at the stoplight, you waited the whole signal, and it's your turn to turn, and then the light starts blinking? That's us. Okay, that gives us the right of way. That's what this grant's about.
So it gives us priority to go through the intersection safely, turns all the other directions besides ours red, turns our direction green, clears the intersection so we could get the big red, heavy truck through the intersection.
And this is for three intersections, correct?
This is not only for three intersections, but 22 fire vehicles and 23 police vehicles.
Correct, yeah.
It does include all the installation costs and engineering costs for the intersection. So.
And which three intersections, just so we clarify? I know 107th was added on there, was that correct?
It was Alcott and 109th. It was HeliMet and Exchange.
Yep.
101st and Civic Drive right here. They, all those intersections either don't have OptiCom or don't have the latest technology, which is the GPS integrated.
We also benefit, we, the fire department, because we cover more than just the town of St. John, we benefit from two, I think, in county. I think Sheffield and 101st, and then it'd be State Line and 101st.
So those are covered by the Lake County Highway Department.
And this is part of a $6.45 million grant from NERC.
Correct.
For a variety of different communities, same grant.
So this is basically just an inter-local agreement so we can have this as part of the grant. It's not an expense to us.
Not yet. The expense is not, we would have an expense. That does not happen until 2025.
Six.
And what is that expense?
$110,000.
Maintenance or an upgrade or a, what's the?
Batch part.
That would be the town's portion.
There is a portion we have to pay, okay.
And fiscal year 2026.
Is it 50-50?
I think it's a 90-10.
Our portion's only 10.
It is.
Okay, because, yeah, it's only 110, 10 grand.
$1 million.
Thank you.
Item H, additional appropriation.
I had emailed seven different additional appropriations for your consideration on Wednesday. I don't know if you have any specific questions.
I don't have any, please.
You've received, yeah, packets for all of them, so.
Item I, transfer resolution.
That's a category to category, Beth.
Any questions on that?
That'll be on the agenda for next week.
All right. Item J, recommendation from Stormwater Board Resolution. Senator Dalton? Danny's here.
All right, thank you. So last evening, the Stormwater Board met and provided a recommendation to council for the implementation of a stormwater fee. Joe, do we know if that recommendation has been circulated after last evening?
Yes, it has, yeah.
Okay.
In fact, they got a copy of the ordinance.
Okay. So over the last couple of months, we have put together a rate study and evaluated based on property class codes and numbers of parcels within commercial, industrial, residential, you know, the number of parcels, what the cost would be monthly to cover the cost of MS4 compliance, which is required by the state, and also other operational costs to cover stormwater maintenance.
One question, Dan.
Yes, sir.
This fee will have to go monthly up until? When do we have to have it submitted to the county so that it can get moved to the tax bills?
So our current timeline to get this finally approved is to have the council approve on... Is this July 26th, I believe?
Right, so they would consider it on first reading.
So next week, council will approve this fee. And then by the end of September, I will have coordinated with the county to get the parcels and then submit the billing file so that they can implement this. file so that they can implement this on the property tax bills.
So that would be.
Collecting it monthly?
There wouldn't be a monthly. That was discussed, but that was not.
That was discussed, okay? It wasn't determined.
Yeah, we're not going to have a monthly collection. It would logistically be impossible.
Right, to get set up and going, but then forget.
Brian, when you said you guys considered the monthly, what was, besides logistically impossible, that's the only reason you chose not to go monthly?
No, no, I had nothing, keep in mind, I'm a liaison.
The board.
Yeah, the board considered it. Basically, the conversation just revolved around, you know, how would you collect it and what a pain in the tush that is.
Because it just gets added on the water bill, so it's a line item on the water bill.
Yeah, it would have to be added on the water bill.
Well, if I may, it's a more simple procedure to, one time a year, ask the county to put this bill on the property tax bills. As, you know, where you see other assessments, things like that on the property tax bills, we would just insert a stormwater fee into that section, and we would only have to do that one time a year. And so you get bi-annual payments to the town.
Because my thought.
At the same time, you get the property tax and the FIT, C-VET, things like that.
Just be that, you know, to get a monthly distribution rather than waiting every six months, but you would keep it going on a monthly basis.
It doesn't nickel dime you to death.
If the town was to put it on the water bill, then it wouldn't have to go off to the county. We would collect it monthly here, right?
When we had discussed this last year, the, I believe the argument was that it would be a large burden to handle all of these monthly bills.
I did not make that argument.
I don't know who.
And we do the collections.
That's just from my recollection, okay.
Not sure who said that.
So the Stormwater Board made a recommendation to you.
All right.
And we are anticipating a second reading and decision next week.
Well, that's the council's pleasure. My thing was to kind of have the council consider it on first reading in July and then adopt it at the August.
In August, okay.
Yeah.
Correction, in August.
If that makes sense. Instead of just voting on it, approving it, and then.
Well, I see some changes. You know, I don't know. If we are going to collect it, I don't know why we would have to send it out to the county.
I agree with Mike. I think it should go on a water bill, and then we take care of it, and then we don't have to worry about the county.
I think that the problem with that is, is that you'd have to do all of the logistical work on each water bill.
Like do it for garbage and.
Well, but if you have four parcels on one lot, three parcels on another, and one parcel, it's going to be, logistically, it's going to be really difficult.
Well, the difficulty would come to your office, correct, Beth? Right?
Yes.
It would be collected through my office, yes.
Right. But if we did it through your office monthly, we would get paid immediately.
Correct.
Right.
Okay.
I like that idea.
I will.
Rather than wait a year.
Apologies, yes. I will intercede here and just say that that would take more time, and we have a deadline of end of September to get this on the county property tax bills.
Right, but if we don't put it on the property tax, on the county's tax bill, and we're going to do it on our own, we lose, we don't have that deadline then, correct? We could do that now or whenever, or effective January one, or, does that sound accurate?
We could even try it.
Yeah, go ahead. I'm sorry.
The current situation is the fee is going to be assessed on the parcel as part of the land use of the parcel, correct?
Correct.
Beth's office does not have access to that data. Hers is strictly based off of an address. So when you are putting that data in there, how is she going to figure out what number goes into what parcel?
And we don't send water bills to railroads, stuff like that. I mean, vacant land.
Good point.
Yeah, so that's kind of the problem.
My only thing is nobody consulted with me to even ask me if it was overly burdensome, so to make a statement that I said it was overly burdensome.
I didn't say it was overly burdensome.
Yeah, somebody said it was overly burdensome.
That was probably the board.
And I think it was the previous board.
Right.
All right, so, so in other words, in other words, not everybody who's going to get charged this gets water from St. John on a bill.
Correct.
Some of it's vacant land.
All right, then I'm okay with, all right, that makes sense.
Yes, where do you send the vacant lot bills? Because they get charged too.
Okay.
Well, we'll have two readings on it, so it's a call for discussion.
Yes.
All right, anybody else have any questions? Moving along. Recommendation from the Water District, 2023 budget appropriation.
Thank you. So the budgets for the, for K and L, if you will, the sanitary and water districts, these are the budgets that were prepared and presented for fiscal year 2023, which, these were adopted by both of the Waterworks Board and the Sanitary District Board. These are for the utility portions of those. The recommendation is to the council to approve those. The town has not, in the past, done a budget for the utility, so this will be the first budget for both of those. Both Senator Dalton for the water and Baker Tully for the sanitary district have put a lot of time and energy into getting these numbers as accurate as possible. So I definitely want to say thank you to them for all the hard work that they put in, as well as to the boards that participated in that process as well. So these are coming to you with the recommendation for approval.
Do they have the right date on there, 2023? Or is this going to start in 2024?
Twenty twenty-three. So this is for the remainder of this fiscal year. We're in the budget process now for 2024.
So then should that be recognized on the paperwork, that it's from such and such till the end of the year? Or no?
Yeah, it should be.
Okay.
It is.
On that, all right. I would just talk on this sheet.
Thank you.
So why do we need to adapt a budget for the last five months of the year? What's, I mean, other than the fact that we should have a budget, but.
I agree with Jerry. I mean, you went through the 2023 budget season and didn't adapt the budget during the traditional budget season, so how would I open up an unappropriated budget at middle, well, over middle way through a year to adapt a budget this year? I thought the purpose was to adapt the budget for 2024 during the traditional budget cycle.
Both of the budgets were presented, were presented for the remainder of this year.
I think 2024 is a good time to start it.
And we're already in the beginning of that, that phase right now for 2024.
Well, that's the question. I mean, do we need to have a budget for 2023? Or can we just start working on this towards?
The boards were both adamant about having a budget for the remainder of the year.
Okay.
Well, I know they wanted a budget, but I know they were adamant about doing it for the, for this year.
They were well aware of that, and they were very adamant about having a budget for the utilities for this year.
So Daniel, is this 2023 budget based on four or five months? The numbers that are presented in whatever this budget is?
We had been requested to prepare a budget back in May from the boards, or in April or May. And so I had just recently updated it through June thirtieth financials so that I could prepare some estimates to what we believe the 2023 rest of the year budget will be.
For five months?
Mm-hmm.
So there are five months?
Six, well, July first through December thirty-first. I understand what you're saying. This was a request by the boards.
Because my understanding from the board members, to me personally, was that they wanted to start with the 2024 budget. So this was, this is a little, I didn't, I had no clue. But that's okay. All right.
We could always ask them when they want to start it. Simple.
They provided their approval, recommendations. I believe both did, Joe, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And so it's now being sent to council for consideration?
I just can't open the budget in the system because we submitted the budget. So I can't go back in to the budget and start entering numbers into the budget at this point.
Okay, so that's.
So they can have the budget and maybe try to stay within those guidelines, but we open up the budget season at one point of the year, and then you enter the budget at that point of the year. I can't come in in August first and reopen the budget that was passed and adopted by the council and what?
And approved by the state.
And approved by the state. Not that, I mean, these are utilities, but.
These funds were never approved, though, were they?
No, because it's unappropriated.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, they're unappropriated.
Okay.
So.
So the intention was to, for the first time in the history of the town, to track these unappropriated utility funds to make sure we're maintaining.
So maybe that's something, Joe.
Internal record of finances.
Since they set the numbers, then maybe Joe could create some sort of an Excel spreadsheet in 2023 and keep track of it. And then when the budget opens again for 2024 in the system, then we can upload the new budget. I don't know.
That works for me, yes. And we can incorporate these funds into our annual budget process, like.
Correct. Like if you're doing the eighteen-month type, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Does that work for everybody?
Item I, or item M, zoning matters. First one is subliminal estates, two-year maintenance bond.
Yeah, so this came to you from the Plan Commission to accept this two-year maintenance bond and three-year warranty for subliminal estates. The total amount, forty-nine thousand five sixty-six fifty-three.
All right. Any questions?
Just, maybe it's a little silliness, but where does that number come from, forty-nine thousand? I mean, if this is supposed to be in lieu of, like, a warranty per se for water main, sanitary sewer, storm sewer, and street improvements, forty-nine thousand dollars doesn't cover anything. So, and I know, we do this all the time. I just, it's like, it just seems like a really low number than what I'm used to seeing, that's all.
Good.
And I'm sure there's a formula, but.
It's a smaller subdivision. It's only a seven-lot subdivision.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's not the big three-hundred-lot subdivision that normally comes in.
All right, never mind. I withdraw my question. I'll figure it out.
It's the one right across the street from Wald McLaren.
Yeah.
All right, item two is BZA favorable recommendation for one hundred thirty-three Wicker Avenue. This is Top Nail.
Yeah, this is for, as you said, for Top Nail. This is for the special exception for the US forty-one overlay district. This is coming to you with a favorable recommendation, correct? And the vote on that was three to zero.
All right, thanks. Item N, recommendation from Plan Commission, adopt park impact fee ordinance.
Oh, N and O, we've already covered, sir.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we're on P.
Going on to P, engineering updates. Tom Nagel.
Good evening, President and Board. So tonight, I got three updates. I want to go over two bids that we've taken and also talk about Earl Drive. So the first bid that was open was Acorn Water Main. And Mr. President, if you're okay, if you want me to read the recommendation in with the numbers, or how would you like to do it? Okay, so on July seventeenth, ten AM, in this room, we opened bids publicly, and we read bids for the Acorn Water Main sanitary sewer and roadway improvements. The first, the low bidder was M&amp;J Underground, and their bid was one million three hundred forty-four thousand eight hundred fifty-three dollars and twenty-five cents. The second bidder was Grimmer Construction, their bid was one million six hundred thirty-one dollars, two hundred ninety-three dollars and fifty cents. And the third bidder was Gatlin Heating and Plumbing, and their bid was one million six hundred and fifty thousand dollars even. The engineer's estimate was one million three hundred and fifty, I'm sorry, one million three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This contract involves a sewer component and a water component, and the prices had to be broken up to what was going to be the sewer budget, what was going to be the water budget. For the total, if we assumed M&amp;J Underground was going to receive the bid, the water portion of their contract would be one million one hundred twenty-one thousand eight dollars and seventy-five cents. And the sewer portion will be two hundred and twenty-three thousand eight hundred forty-four dollars and fifty, fifty cents. We discussed this project at the Sewer Board and at the Water Board, and during those meetings, the board members agreed to it. Mr. Westland informed Mr. Wizwati that this contract will need approval by Sewer Board, Water Board, and Town Council Board. So in the past couple of days, we got Sewer and Water Board approval. Now we're coming to the Town Council Board to discuss it. After that meeting, Mr. Pondinas brought up a lawsuit that M&amp;J Underground was in. And he asked me what my opinion was on it, and it didn't involve St. John, and I didn't know what we could do with it. Since then, Mr. Pondinas, correct me if I'm wrong, talked to the Corporation Council, and that's where we stand with it. What we want to do is we want to bring this up and show everybody where these numbers are coming from and how we're getting them to, on it too, so.
Yeah, council said it does not make them an unresponsible bidder, and the information that he's seen in that, determine that, so it shouldn't affect the bid. And he couldn't make any other comments on what was going on with that stuff, that lawsuit that was presented to him.
Right. So in the bid recommendation is, our recommendation is awarded contract to M&amp;J Underground in the amount of one million three hundred forty-four thousand eight hundred fifty-three dollars and twenty-five cents. And then the breakdown is attached to the payout letter, or I'm sorry, to the recommendation letter. There's an Excel spreadsheet that shows where all the funds are being allocated to, whether water pays for it or sewer pays for it. And that's where we stand with it. Is there any questions?
I thank you for bringing it up, Tom. That's just, we want to be transparent to all the people that are involved in that and that neighborhood. So thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you. I appreciate that, too. Okay, so we'll jump on to the next bid. Is there any other questions by anybody? Good to go? Okay, so if it works out perfectly, we got sewer, water, and hopefully we'll get Town Council approval next week, and then we could get the project going. Tentatively, we're looking at doing a pre-construction meeting around next Friday, if everything gets approved. And at that time, we'll get a schedule, and then we'll put together a letter and a flyer for all the residents in the area, so the residents know what's coming and what's going to happen next. Okay? So the other bid that we took at the same day, at the same time, on July seventeenth, ten AM in this council, was the 2023 CCMG paving improvements. And the low bidder, Milestone Contractors North Incorporated, was two million one hundred and ninety thousand one hundred thirty-seven dollars and eighty-five cents. And Reith Riley Construction came in second at two million six hundred seventy-one thousand five hundred seven dollars and eighty-one cents. The engineer's estimate on the project was two-point-four million. The low bidder was approximately ten percent under. We've worked with Milestone in the past, and so has the town, and therefore our recommendation is awarded to Milestone in the amount of two million one hundred ninety thousand one hundred thirty-seven dollars and eighty-five cents. This incorporates a one-million-dollar CCMG grant that you'll be getting for it, too. And it also incorporates a small part of the county route that's on Parish, that the county informed us that they have Milestone as their general paving contractor. Now, some of you brought up Mr. Swets, and what they would do is have Milestone bill them for that portion. If it wasn't done that manner, there would be a blank in there, and also the county was appreciative that we went to this effort to get this to meet contiguous, too, on it. And so that one, too, if the board approves it next Wednesday, we'd like to have a pre-construction meeting on Friday, and then try to get this started as soon as possible.
How soon do you think they'd start, Tom?
They were looking to start it within a couple of weeks after Friday. The only thing that's holding them up, and obviously they're not going to get their insurance and their bonds until after the board approves it on Wednesday. They have to get their insurance and their bonds. Then their signature's done by the town. town, and then after that, the contract's going to be enacted. Cannot let them start unless we have a contract and we have insurance and bonds in place.
And we also have to send our funding request to the state too.
Okay. Okay, any other questions? Great. Okay, the last one is going to be on Earl Drive. Jason, thank you very much for pulling that up. So we all know where Earl Drive is. Earl Drive is just over to the east of the McDonald's, and the issue with Earl Drive that we have here is that the property owners owned to the center line of Earl Drive are all the way across Earl Drive. That's actually private property going through it. We were asked to come up with a solution on how to improve it, and the way that we recommend that we get it improved is that the town buys the right-of-way and improves the roadway. So it's, no, I'm sorry, buys the private property, turn it into right-of-way, and then improve the roadway. So if you look at, for example, the yellow box, the darker yellow box is the permanent right-of-way we want with a 20-foot easement below it. That property in yellow is owned to the property owner that is directly to the east. You look at the purple box, same thing. The dark purple is the right-of-way we want to have dedicated, is right-of-way, and the light purple is a 20-foot construction easement that will go with, after the construction's completed. The magenta or blue color up there is owned by the McDonald property owner, and you can see, people own past the center line, across the right-of-way, and by having this in place, we would have a 40-foot right-of-way in there. It's a substandard right-of-way, but I think it's the best we could do without impeding too much into property owners. The reconstruction of the road, we'd be keeping the curb along the McDonald side, but everything to the east of the McDonald side coming out will be coming out. So the property owner on the east side will get a brand-new driveway, will get a brand-new curb, there'll be a drainage structure installed. The cost for that work up there is about $110,000. So what has happened so far is that this plan has been presented to the property owners saying, what do you think? Are you okay with this? Is this one way of solving the problem? We got positive answers from them, but positive answers doesn't mean we got approval from them either. There has to be a negotiation on the property price, there has to be, and also the right-of-way has to be turned over to the town so the town can do the improvement on it. But you're making headway on it. Now you have a plan in place, now you know it's going to be exposure about $110,000, and we need to get the property owners to agree to it if we want to go forward with it. I don't know what the answer is if we don't go forward with it. I don't know if we let it go and it's status quo, however you want to handle it, we will do everything we can to help you with it. But at least you know what kind of number you're looking at.
Leaving it the way it is is not the answer.
I agree with you, sir. But once again, you're dealing with two individual property owners, and you've got to get them to buy in on it. Like I said, we had a meeting with Mr. Wizwati there, and Joe, you could chime in too. Everything was positive.
Yeah.
They were like, thank you.
We had a good meeting with both of the owners there. We discussed, you know, ways of getting this done. Obviously, they're thrilled to death to, you know, get this resolved. The issue is, obviously, we've got to take that thing down beyond the base and do it right. I mean, it's just, it was, it's basically like you're driving on a parking lot.
It'd be stupid.
And with big trucks and everything driving on it, it's just destroyed that whole area, so, you know, before we get way ahead of ourselves, we wanted to bring this to the council and see, you know, get direction from you guys in terms of, do we start getting the appraisals on knowing the right-of-way that we do need now for the value on that property so we can at least, you know, make an offer and enter into an agreement with these guys to get this stuff done?
I would say.
Yeah.
I think we already had appraisals on it.
We did.
Good.
Those were for the property as it was, didn't consider the right-of-way, that we were, the additional right-of-way that we're going to need. So we're going to have to get an appraisal on the property, and if there's any temporary right-of-way as well, if that's something that, you know, because we're going to have to restore that anyway.
Mm-hmm.
Because he, there was talk of buying that and then going to the south and then going to the north, and all totaled, that was like $238,000 in that neighborhood. That's just a lot of money.
It is.
I mean...
It is. I mean, we just paid $330,000 for a house, we knocked it down.
Yeah, I know. And we didn't have no legal opinion on it either, so...
Jason, if you go to the third page, I could show you what the improvements are going to consist of. Right there, the one with the profile. So we're improving the drainage on it, and we're also, like I said, this is showing you, the portion on top is the existing conditions, the portion below is the improved conditions. We're improving the turning radiuses on the curbs. It's going to be much better, that's what I can tell you. Like I said, we prefer to see a 60-foot or a 66-foot right-of-way, but we were getting pushback from the property owners. They don't want to give up as much land.
Yeah.
And we can make it work with a 40, and it's, we'll shoehorn it in, it'll make it better for the residents and for the community. Okay, thank you very much. Have a nice evening.
Thank you.
Any other questions on this matter? Next, interlocal agreement with Lake County ARPA funds.
Yeah, so last year, Lake County wanted some plans and projects from the town that we might be taking in the next few years. They compiled a list back then, one of which was the West 93rd Avenue project at 93rd, and then the other one were some water bond projects that we were short funds on, which one of them was the Acorn Water Project. So $462,143 was what they are allocating to us. Those will be paid out of the, this was approved by both the commissioners and the council. This will be on the agenda for next week for approval, so that way we can utilize those funds.
Are these the funds that we were given by the county council?
Yes, these were the funds that were allocated for that. The total is 146,143, or 462, good lord, 143. Long day.
How much was that that the county gave us? That was like, was it 400,000?
462,143. It was like two separate allocations that they did.
Okay.
But it's part of the interlocal, that's...
Yeah, Dan Dernell was here one month, and then Christian Jurgensen was here, and...
But we still have to do an interlocal agreement for it, and that was already taken in place, I think. I think Beth started that. To have that paperwork signed, you have to do that interlocal agreement for that.
Right, the county commissioners already passed it, and then the county council already passed.
That's just...
That's, will be on the agenda for next week.
That's on their agenda.
No, it's on our agenda for next week.
Any questions?
They've already signed it off.
All right, moving on.
The, yeah, the final thing here is an ordinance establishing the specific TIFF funds. So there is establishing three separate funds for the TIFF, 448, well, it's in the ordinance there, if you want to take a look at that. These are recommended by the Clerk Treasurer's Office.
All right, any questions?